There you go.
Okay, welcome to the Seabrook School Board meeting for December 8th, 2020. I'm about to read the checklist to ensure meetings are compliant with the Right to Know Act during the state of emergency. Oh, hang on, there we go, okay. We're the Seabrook School Board. I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access and that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Seabrook School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 921-81504829, or by clicking on the following website address We've lost your audio, Mike. On Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided to the web on the website of the SCU 21 office at www.seu21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 114, or email In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting should be done by roll call. I start this meeting by taking a roll call and attendance. When each member states that their presence, please also state whether there's someone in the room with them as required by the Right to Know law. Deb, would you please take the attendance?
Sorry about the dog. Forrest Carter.
Here and alone.
Jennifer Hubbard.
And currently alone, but they should be coming back shortly.
Jessica Brown.
I'm home with family.
Kelly Huber.
You're on mute, Kelly.
Alone, but they should be coming home shortly, sorry.
And Michael Rabidow.
Currently alone, may have one other person.
Roll call taken.
All right, thank you all very much for attending. I'd like to start this meeting on a solemn note with a moment of silence for Terry Bragg, as we all know, he passed away this past weekend, and Terry's been a huge part of this school for a number of years as the facilities person, a neighbor, a friend, and a cherished community member. Please let's honor him with a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next item is public comment on the agenda items, and that's specifically on agenda items other than the in-person school plan. Deborah? You're muted.
Muted, yeah.
I would like to remind people of the public comment procedures. Give me one moment, I'm going to share my screen. I haven't figured out how to get it expand.
It's up.
It's fine, okay.
It's there.
Comments on agenda items other than in-person school plan, maximum of 15 minutes per public comments. Board vote required to extend the 15 minutes, three minutes per individual. Public comments on other agenda items or upon any other matter of public concern directly relating to this district's school policies, programs, and operations will be heard under a separate public comment that is scheduled later in the meeting. Comments including complaints regarding individual employees or individuals directed to the superintendent in accord with the complaint/grievance resolution process set forth in the school board policies KE and/or K. Members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters, and thus, in most instances, any board response will be deferred pending consideration by the full board. The board desires that all speakers strive to adhere to ordinary norms of reform and civility.
So as Mr. Rabidow said, we have a separate public comment scheduled after the board hears the presentation, particularly that with respect to the middle school plan, and after the board has a chance to have some discussion on that, then there'll be a second public comment period specific to questions or comments on that presentation specifically, but this one is intended for any other agenda items that the board's considering this evening.
Great. Deb, if I'm correct, I do not see any hands up at this point in time for public comment on the agenda items. Seeing none, hearing none, I will continue. The first item of the evening will be approval of the November 10th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jess. Do I have a second, please? Kelly?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, Jen, second. Deb, unless there's further comment or discussion, please take a vote on this.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Jessica Brown.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
And Michael Rabidow.
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you, Deb. And the second item is the budget review meeting held November 17th, 2020. If there's no further discussion on that particular meeting, I'll take a motion to accept and approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly, and I need a second, please.
I'll second that, oh.
Okay. Who's up? Forrest, I guess, is a second on that? Thank you very much. I don't see any discussion regarding this, so Deb, would you please take a roll call vote?
You can again, who was the, who?
Forrest. Forrest Carter and Jen made the motion.
They made the motion, thank you. Okay, Carter?
I didn't make the motion, Kelly made the motion.
Kelly made that motion, yes.
I'm sorry.
All right, so Forrest Carter for the vote?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Michael Rabidow.
Yes, thank you very much. Our next item is the finance report.
Thank you, Mike. So, attached on board docs, we have included the monthly year-to-date expenditure report as well as the monthly year-to-date revenue report, and I do want to take a moment to discuss some revenue, on the revenue side. So as previously reported, our RSAU, SAU 21 did receive ESER fund, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds back in May of 2020. This was part of the CARES federal stimulus package, and Seabrook did receive $205,855. Now, in addition to those funds, we did recently, we were recently notified that the state of New Hampshire would be providing additional school funding via the Supplemental Public School Response Fund. And that was a total of $45 million that was allocated across the state at $200 per student for each student, for every student enrolled in the district. And this was really meant to provide relief and support for any unanticipated costs that were associated with safe opening and operations of schools during the pandemic. So as part of this funding source, Seabrook is receiving or did receive $134,800 in funding. So these funds were treated as offsetting revenue. You know, however, we, so it won't be reflected in the expenditure report, you'll see it on the revenues report. And we are expected to document the usage of these, of how we applied these monies. So these could be, the requirements were that the expenditures be incurred between March 1st of 2020 and December 30th of 2020, and they did need to be COVID-19 related and not previously budgeted or covered by an alternate grant sourcing. So as, as a significant portion of these expenditures were for costs that were originally received or we anticipated receiving approval from FEMA. However, FEMA did rescind that funding opportunity for schools. They did declare schools ineligible for any FEMA funding. So we had already put together a list of expenditures that were COVID-related. So of that $134,000 approximately, most of those funds were expended for PPE. So items such as masks, gloves, disinfecting solution, electrostatic sprayers, you know, hand sanitizer. Then we expended some funds in technology, air filters, so the MERV air filters for ventilation systems, you know, different signage for the school as far as like one-way signage and six-foot social distancing. We purchased desk barriers, face shields, and those type of expenditures. So we did receive those funds and we have documented those expenditures. One last item I want to discuss on the revenue side, what is current legislation that's being discussed at the state level? So as you may all be aware, there has been much discussion in the state in regard to adequate education funding, and that there was a, you know, court mandated, or there has been court decisions that call for inadequate funding sources. So what the state legislatures are looking at is currently a bill that would utilize swept funds. So swept funds is the state's funding source for the adequate education. So they have, they calculate the adequate education based on number of students and then factor in a formula based on students with disabilities, ELL students, free and reduced population, and then that's, they create that total number for each individual school district. Now swept funds are collected at the local level, and any, if a individual town collects more swept funds than adequate education aid that they are anticipated to receive, then the town gets to keep that differential. Now what this legislation will call for is is for that differential to be returned to the state and then reallocated to other districts that need the funding. So most of the state would, you know, approximately 78% of school districts would receive additional aid, whereas 18% would receive, would lose funding. So Seabrook would be one of the towns that would receive additional funding. So it's just something I want to put on your radar as something that's being considered. There's no guarantee that this law will pass. There's, you know, it could, there could potentially be a veto. However, it does seem like there is some fairly broad bipartisan support because, you know, most towns would benefit, so their representatives, whether, you know, regardless of party, would typically be in favor of this type of legislation. So it's something that we'll continue to monitor and we'll certainly update you if any bills do pass. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions in regard to any of the financial reports or this potential legislation.
Thank you, Matt. Great job. I appreciate all the updates on the various aspects of possible funding coming to the town. That would be great if it does occur, and I'm hoping that they do pass the legislation. Okay. Let's go on to the elementary school plan, second semester.
Bill, was there anything you had to say, or do you want me to just jump into mine?
No, I thought we'd go right to the two of you. I know you have a few updates, and then the meat of this is Aaron and the work that's been done off of the surveys and updates since our last meeting, so no, go ahead.
Sure, okay. So we welcomed 25 students total back into in-person instruction yesterday, grades pre-K through third grade. We didn't include fourth because there were no requests to come back. So, which, as you know, fourth grade was our kind of tightest space-wise, so that worked out for us. And we did so by creating three additional classrooms, so we were able to avoid that satellite classroom model that I said we were possibly going to have to do. So these are just standalone individual classrooms that obviously are aligned to the other classrooms at that grade level, but they have independent teachers. I do want to thank the staff for being flexible. We had people moving spaces and the teams of teachers helping to get the teachers on board in terms of curriculum and aligning across the grade level. So that was an undertaking, and they've done a great job making sure that we're aligned. We do have, for our third grade classroom, we still have a temporary teacher in there. We're looking to solidify a permanent teacher for the rest of the year, but we have a special thank you to Kelsey Conley, one of our educational assistants, who is in a, has been going to school to become a teacher, just a couple credits away, and, you know, looked at this as an opportunity to work with a classroom, and she's done an amazing job starting yesterday, so thank you to Kelsey and just to all the teachers for making that possible. I will say, we continue to have challenges with staffing, you know, day-to-day. As you know, with kind of quarantine periods and things like that, but we're making it work and just kind of reassessing and looking at things and shifting things around as much as we can, trying to maintain our cohort model, which has been effective. We have some subs, somewhat limited this year, but we have some substitutes that are coming in and, you know, just continuing to make it work. I think the shortening of the quarantine period from 14 to 10 has helped alleviate some of that. We have more students these days since our last meeting that have to quarantine and staff, not related to cases so much in the school, but, you know, people having relatives or outside contacts that has caused them to have to quarantine. So we continue to work through those challenges, but we're doing okay. I just want to say on behalf of both the elementary and middle school, not part of our school plan, but this is my opportunity to speak at this meeting. So we just wanted to thank Dr. Lupini for his leadership over the last two and a half years. And through his leadership, we have, and the formation of a strong administrative team at the SAU and across the schools, we've been able to implement many new policies, practices, and programs throughout SAU 21, and we wish Dr. Lupini well in his retirement, the real retirement this time. And we know that he will continue to find ways to contribute to the field of education, which we'll be grateful to, you know, follow his practices in the future, and I'm sure we'll continue to learn from him and collaborate with him. So thank you, Dr. Lupini.
Thank you, Stephanie. Very nice, thank you.
And lastly, just, I'll see if I can get through this one, but we are continuing to keep the family of Terry Bragg and our staff in our thoughts. Sorry. Told Aaron I might not make it through. He played an important role in our school and the larger community, always willing to support and mentor those around him and focused on doing what was best for students. His family was involved in our schools for decades, including his mother even serving a role on our school board in the past. And he took great pride in his work here, and we took great pride in being able to claim him as a colleague and friend. So we continue to keep him in our thoughts, and we will miss him greatly.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Oh, thank you.
That was great. Do any of the members have any comment regarding this second semester plan? Okay. Aaron, I'm going to open this up to you unless Bill.
We probably shouldn't have had the pregnant person do that. Extra emotions, guys, sorry.
Thank you.
Which Terry many times was like, man, can I go on maternity leave this year? That sounds really good. A lot of jokes about that. Thank you guys for your support that you've shown to our staff as well throughout these days.
Aaron, can I just say quickly before you go, that, just a comment on that and the really amazing work that's been done by people at your schools over the last, well, really four days. You may remember from Joint Boards, some of you who've been around a little bit longer than just since March, the creation of a crisis response team, and Raymond Pillsbury from the high school who leads that, but has a number of members from across the SAU, including your schools, who really pulled together to support people during the last four days. I was in awe of the discussions that Raymond led with these two principals, our SAU team, and a lot of people from your building and other buildings over the weekend to make sure that everyone, students, staff, even some close people in the community who knew and worked with Terry very closely, were supported over the last few days. And while, you know, Raymond would be the first person to say there are things we can do better and we'll debrief and figure out what some of those things are, it was really quite amazing to see these people come together and support one another, and your principals did a really amazing job.
Yes, I'd also like to add, the board obviously would like to thank them all for doing this because these are always hard times, and the community comes together as a whole and really does carry that burden. I thank you all. Aaron, with that.
That's a tough act to follow, but thank you, Dr. Lupini, and thank you to the SAU staff who really worked together to make that crisis response team happen in SAU 21. I can't say enough about that response, it's been huge, so. It's appreciated by all here. All right, I'm going to share my screen and hope it shares the right one. Is that the right screen? Because I can't see what it's sharing, okay, thank you. So since our last board meeting, we went back to the drawing table, so to speak, most importantly, sent out another survey and worked hard to get responses through that survey. It to get some better information for planning. So what I have done is updated my presentation, and I will go over that with you and answer questions at the end. I just want to say thank you to my administrative team here at the middle school as well as all the teachers who have worked hard with me and will continue to work hard on making this plan work. So as I said last time, the goal is to bring students back into school in a safe manner, and this time we are, we're looking at survey results, safety, and transportation. I'm going to just give you some of the data with the survey results. We had 251 total responses. Out of that, 197 said they would like to move back into person, which is 78.5%, and 54 said they would like to remain remote, which is 21.5%. Our current enrollment is 315, so that meant 60 people did not respond to the survey, and after the survey window ended, we did make phone calls to all the families that didn't respond in an effort to get an answer from them through the phone calls, and we were successful with some of those, but still had no response from some families after that outreach. Part of the survey was a question about transportation and whether they, people would want their students to ride the bus, and 66% of our families indicated that they would need the school's transportation, and 34% of families indicated that they will provide their own transportation. So that was good information for us to have in planning for that. What everybody's waiting for. So our proposed plan now is that in-person instruction will begin on January 11th, as I had said before. And what we are wanting to do and hoping for approval for is that we would have two grade levels per day in the building for two days a week. So it would look like on Monday and Tuesday, grades five and seven would be in all day, and on Thursday and Friday, grades six and eight would be in. That would leave, Wednesdays would continue to be a remote early release day. And then the three days a week that the students are not in school would continue to be remote and would continue to be synchronous. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means in just a second, but I just want to also note that students who are choosing to be, to remain fully remote would be able to do so and would also continue with synchronous instruction. And what I think is important for everyone to know is that, we hear a lot, synchronous versus asynchronous. Synchronous means live instruction, which means students have access to their teachers during that class period. Asynchronous, it would be, in some of the hybrid models, we've heard people talking about where they're in person for two days, but the other two days that they're at home, they're just doing work that was given to them, and they don't have live instruction on those two days. This plan provides for a live instruction five days a week for all students, even if they're choosing to stay remote. And that's why we have it set up this way, because we felt it was important to continue with the live instruction, but also we know it's important to have students in the building, so we're hoping this is a bit of a balance. And we know that those students who are choosing to be remote and choosing for their own reasons, safety reasons, to keep their kids at home, that it was important for those students to continue to have that instruction as well. Phase two of the plan, as I had said before, and I continue to say, that our goal is to continue to get students in more and more. We're not going to just say we're going to do two days and settle with that for the rest of the school year. That's not our hope at all, our hope is to continue. So we're able to pretty quickly move into what I'm calling phase two, but, which is an additional day on Wednesdays, we would be able to bring in two grade levels, and those two grade levels would have to alternate every Wednesday. So it would look like in the first week that we start this plan, grades five and seven would come on that Wednesday, and in the second week, grades six and eight would come on that Wednesday. That Wednesday will still, would still remain an early release day because we've built the schedule in such with our long blocks that that's when the teachers have their team meetings and the planning time with each other that doesn't exist on any other day, so we would keep that intact. And the target date would just start that, the week of January 25th. So just to give people an example, because I know when we flip-flop, such as with our A-Day, B-Day, it has been confusing to some families. So January 27th means grades five and seven would come three days that week. They'd come Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And then the following week, February 3rd, grades six and eight would come three days. They would come Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Safety factors that I think are important to, I'm going to say reiterate, because I know a lot of these are similar to what Stephanie has presented, what we continued, we started to present over the summer, and you've heard several times, but just so the community is aware of the things. several times, but just so the community is aware of the things that we're considering and the things that we think are important for having students in the building. A daily screener. Many people are familiar with that. It's done through, online through something called Pickup Patrol. Elementary families are using that already. So, if you already have an elementary student, it's easy. You just get added to it. If it's new, you would need to, you would, you'll get a welcome email and you'll set that up prior to the starting. Families must complete this every day before the student comes into school. It's important to know that students won't be able to go into the classroom without that screener done. So, when families forget that, that, you know, our school nurse would be pulling those students aside, making phone calls home and make, and if we can't get ahold of someone, it's possible we would have, we would, you know, the student isn't allowed to enter class. So, we would have conversations with families about that. And, and hopefully families can set themselves a reminder and put something on their cellphone that says, you know, don't forget to do that. Staff, go through that too. We have to enter that before we get into the building and sometimes you forget, but you get that reminder. I think it sends an email to everybody, just reminding them. So, that's an important piece that has to be done, that daily screener with those questions that people are pretty familiar with at this point. Students, our students will remain in one classroom and our staff will rotate. So, that allows for small classes, small groups of students to stay with each other all day. They'll be staying within the social distancing guidelines within that classroom. It allows for us to keep cohorts together as much as possible. In the middle school, when we say cohort, because our teachers are teaching an entire grade level, sometimes that cohort might be just that class size in that classroom, but it also may include the entire grade level as one cohort, depending on, on what we're looking at, because the teachers will see all of the students in a given day or, or half the students each day based on our current schedule.
Erin, excuse me, can I just ask you, I think this would be helpful for people. When you say class size is small enough, so as you've thought about the class sizes and seen the number of people who want to come back and, and have their kids come back to school, what is that, what is that number? How are you doing? How are you arriving at that number?
Thank you. Great question. So, right now, the way we have arrived at that number is with the assistance of our facilities department, who's been amazing, both over the summer and even just last week, we did some more with it. Is measuring our classrooms and really laying out the desks so that students can be six feet apart from each other and figuring out how many desks can we put in a classroom, given that we know that that includes the adults. So, you'll have a teacher in some classrooms, you'll have an, an education associate in that classroom as well and really mapping it out. And they've gone classroom to classroom and, and have watched the building with facilities department to find out how many that is in. Widely, that is 12. So, we are looking at a maximum of 12 students in a classroom. We do have, you know, perhaps a couple of classrooms that we could put more in, but we're sticking with 12 for right now and then. But that, that's just as simple as it's been a measurement and really, just like I said, mapping out the classrooms and knowing how we can safely do that with those current desks that we have in each classroom.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking. The one exception to the students staying in one classroom is that the unit, we're have made it so that the students will be able to travel to their Unified Arts class, which allows music to happen in the music room, PE to happen in the gym, art to happen in the art room, where those places are a little bit harder. Those, those teachers have a little bit of a harder time traveling. It also gives students a little bit of movement throughout the day. We understand that it is going to be hard for students to stay in one, one classroom all day and we're going to work to make that as easy as we can for them. Social distancing guidelines will be followed. We have markings on our floors. We have signs that remind the students of wearing masks and social distancing. Those things are throughout the building. That had been set up long ago at this point and will continue to work on that, reminding students what those guidelines are and remembering to stay six feet away, wearing masks. Masks would be worn while indoors and six feet away from anyone outdoors. So, they'd be required all day. When we can give students mask breaks, we'll be adding that into the day. And if they can get outside and be more than six feet apart from each other, they would be able to have that, that break from the mask. If we had issues with students who were refusing to wear masks, then we would be having conversations with home and, and potentially needing to send students home. But I, I don't anticipate, given that the students that we have had in the building, we've had some great success with that. That hasn't been an issue, but that would be the requirement to be in school. Students would have lunch and breakfast in the classrooms. The nutrition department has done an amazing job with that, as they've been working with the elementary school for some time now and also with the students that are here in the middle school, providing that bag lunch and also breakfast. And, and like I said, they, they've got that down to a science and we worked with the elementary school and with Abigail Kaplan, our nutrition director, to come up with a schedule that will work for them so that they can provide the lunches to the classrooms. So, we've been all working closely on that. Staff would be providing close supervision of students who are moving in the hallway. We, we understand that we need to make sure that guidelines are being followed and that students, when not supervised, might decide to take those masks off or, you know, forget to stay six feet apart because they're excited to see each other and that kind of thing. So, we'll be monitoring that. Students will be permitted to use the bathroom in limited numbers, so we'll have a system so that we don't have congregating in the bathroom and we don't have to worry about issues with crowding in small spaces. So, we've, these are just all things that we have thought of and will have a plan for. Transportation. It has worked out pretty well. The bus company has been in close contact with us on that as well. The elementary school will continue its regular bus routine. And how it will work is that they, after they do their elementary bus run, they will then, the buses will be disinfected and they will go out and do the middle school run. So, during, for the days that students are in person, the schedule will change slightly for those students and their day will start at 9:00 AM here instead of what was 8:00 AM. So, they'd be dropped off about 8:45 and the day will go to 2:30, whereas when they're remote, they end around 1:30. And that is the way that we are able to provide enough bussing for students that want it. We'll provide enough spacing on the buses based on the requirements. And bus drivers are able to do both runs within their contracted timeframe. So, that worked out well. I didn't put a slide up that says questions, but that is the end of my presentation and.
Erin, essentially then, though it's being proposed is that phase one, kids are in school two days a week. And in phase two, they're in school five out of every 10 days. In other words, that Wednesday rotates.
Correct.
Okay. Mike, I have one more thing I'll add and then, and then just if we can open this up and it's on a slightly different topic, but it's one that we've been discussing and I'm sorry, Erin, you haven't heard this yet. At our, at our, we, we were asked at the last board meeting about sports. And, and right now, it appears that we're running into the same problem we ran into in the fall. And that is that our decision is less relevant than really searching for people who we would play. At the last Southeasters meeting, which is the school districts from the southeastern part of the state, I didn't get an indication from any superintendent in that group that they were 100% certain today that they were running middle-level sports. So, it, it, it may very well be that we run into the same problem that we ran into in the fall, that is, looking at whether we would do this or not and discovering very quickly that because Hampton's not, because Portsmouth, because Exeter, because whoever, that we don't have anybody to play. And that's how it looks right now. That's not 100% certain yet. Many school districts are dealing right now with whether they're going to run high school sports and, and the middle-level sports unfortunately at the moment are a bit of an afterthought or are going to follow from, from that high school decision. Those high school decisions for the winter are very, very complicated because of the indoor nature of all of those sports and, and, you know, masks to play basketball and wrestle and, and all those kinds of things that athletic directors are dealing with. But, but right now, at the last meeting we had, it looked like we were going to have problems with whether other people were going to, were going to run middle-level sports at all. So.
Great. Thank you, Bill. One quick clarification, Erin, on those 61 families or students that have not responded. I guess this may be the only forum that we can actually inform those families that this is what is going to happen with their children on the beginning of that school day. Could you sort of outline that, please?
Can you, Clara? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, the 61 students that didn't, their family or whatever, didn't respond to your survey, are they going to be in class and considered part of it, or are they just simply going to be on the remote roster?
Our discussion earlier today, Erin.
Right. So, at this point where, you know, 12 students in a class is, is not a lot and that's what's safe. So, where we don't have spaces for students in person and where the board voted last month that if, if families didn't respond, that meant that they would stay remote. Those families will end up having to stay remote for the time being, because, you know, if we don't have space for them to come in safely and they didn't, they had their chance to respond. And unfortunately, you know, like, we can't even say it was just technology and, and emails. You know, my administrative assistant made phone calls to all of those families and many of them didn't respond to those, so. So, there are, there are definitely families that will end up having to stay remote, even if, you know, they may have said, oh, I really want my student in person, but at this time, they'll have to stay remote.
Great. I just want to make it right out there in public exactly what's going to happen irregardless, in case they get this information.
Thank you for that clarification. We did have received, you know, kids are starting to hear about it. So, we have received emails over the last week. Whoa, wait, I didn't, you know, so we've worked to the best we can, but at this point, we're, we're, our class sizes are, are pretty full and, you know, we can't, we can't jeopardize safety. So, we're kind of stuck with those numbers.
Great. Thank you. To the board members, I'm going to open this up to us first and then the public. Kelly, I see your hand up.
You need to unmute, Kelly.
I should be used to this. So, um, so Erin, I think this plan is excellent. I think there's been a lot of thought process put into this and I appreciate it. I just have a quick question. So, the date is January 11th. I'm just, I guess I'm just asking where the January 11th comes in? Because when, when do, when do we get back from school, Christmas break?
Fourth.
January 4th?
It's the second week back, is what she's recommended here. That's right. We get back the fourth.
So, why are we going out to the 11th? I'm just asking.
Good. So, that's a fair question. The fourth gives us that week. We have, you know, a lot of staff that for a variety of reasons haven't been in the building up till now. So, it gives them some time to get into the building, get prepared. It gives us time to make sure that our, the classrooms are all set up. Right now, we do have some students coming into multiple classrooms, so the classrooms need to be set up so that they're all with the right formations of desks. But most importantly, it's, you know, making sure that we're ready to go, staff are in the building, have a chance to set up their classrooms if they haven't had a chance yet. You know, we're still coming off of the holidays and potential for some students who may need to quarantine if they travel. All of those factors, kind of, we just took that week to give us that buffer week and then start the following Monday.
There, there are, thank you, Erin, for that. There, there are some number of districts in the state, good number of them in our, in our county, if you will, that are remote through the 19th. They did the two weeks after Thanksgiving at least, and they're doing the two weeks after, after Christmas because of community numbers, because of the fear of people traveling, all those kinds of things. Erin kind of split the difference. I think the biggest reason is what Erin just said around, it's no secret that in this building, there were a significant number of people who, who were part of the FF-CRA and/or who are transitioning from ADA accommodations. And they haven't, they haven't been in the building for this time and, and to give them that time to, to get oriented, to get into their schedules, I think is a really good idea.
I mean, I respect that, but they've been out of the building for 20 weeks. If you, they, did they go back September 8th? I think they went back September 8th. So, I think the accommodation was until December 31st. So, we're giving 20.
That's true. They won't be out of the building the week of the fourth. They'll be in the building.
Okay, that's fair. I, I just, I think December 30th, I think, I don't know, 20 weeks is a long time. I think they, they've been given a lot of accommodation.
They're not being given accommodation after the fourth. That's not an accommodation. It's, it's, it's really in the interest of trying to get the staff back in and have them be able to plan together and all of those kinds of things. It's not an accommodation. Their accommodation, if they were FF-CRA, their accommodation is over. If they're ADA, their accommodation doesn't end on the 31st. Their accommodation does not end on the 31st. And some people who are on ADA requests throughout our districts are choosing to remain out because they have an underlying health condition and their doctor thinks it's dangerous for them to come back to work. And some of them will come back with additional PPE or additional accommodations. And others of them are not coming back, are choosing not to come back. But that's a separate category. The FF-CRA people, their accommodations end on the 31st and they will be back in the building starting on the fourth.
No, I mean, I can definitely understand the concern. I mean, the numbers are huge. You know, the, I mean, I'm going to sound like I'm contradicting myself, because I definitely have a huge concern for them going back right now. That's why I thought that going back in September was definitely the thing to do now. Now, I definitely look back and say, we should have definitely done this in September. So, I mean, I, I think what Erin's put together is amazing. I just kind of wish we did this in September, because I'm not so sure we're going to actually, you know, I'm not being negative. I'm not so sure we're going to actually be able to do this, because it's pretty scary right now. And I'm going to be honest with you. So, if we can do this with the numbers as high and they, hopefully they go down by January, that'll be amazing. But if we actually can do this, you know, hopefully we can. So, but thank you, Erin. I appreciate your efforts. I definitely know this took a lot of work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The other consideration too is that teachers have not been together since forever. And this one week gives them a chance to really re-acclimate themselves to the classroom, each other, PPE, special requirements that we're not aware of and each teacher isn't aware. So, I think it's, it's a great plan because of that.
Yeah, Mike, they haven't been together either.
That's a great comment. I, I appreciate that. Jess or Forrest, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I wanted to just again, kind of say thank you, Erin. Like, I really got to commend you on the plan. I mean, I for one definitely feel like you did hear us. And you kind of, and I know that your goal is to get kids into the school. And I really want to say thank you for taking your original plan and then kind of adding more to it, because I think this is a great plan. I do. I love it. One thing I do want to, I want to mention to everyone, and this is kind of, kind of going to be news for you two, Erin and Bill. There is a, with Seabrook Adventure Zone, we usually are mandated not to be able to run program during school day or what that school day, the timeframe turns out to be. We now, until the end of the year or the end of next school year, I should probably say, have the option to write a waiver through the state. And what that waiver will grant us, the, the permission to do, is to offer any school supports and technically after-school programming, but additional student supports during the actual school day. So, if there is any gap area that you're seeing needs to be filled for socially-emotional learning or for student socialization or even additional academic supports, again, typically, we wouldn't be able to do that during the school day. Now, if we get a plan, a very easy plan, we can create that waiver and we could have that, that waiver ready within a week. So, we definitely are here as a tool. You know, SAS is doing a lot right now. We definitely have our fingers all over the place, trying to give these kids a lot of in-person, outdoor opportunity. But we would love to supply any, any support that, that you see needs to happen. All right?
Great. Thanks, Forrest.
Just want to say thank you, Erin, for going back from your original plan and adding that extra day. I really appreciate that and I look forward to the day that the kids can get back completely. And I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. I look forward to it, too.
Yeah, I think we all do at this point. Excuse me. Jen, do you have any comment?
No, just thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Now that we've commented, Deb, will you moderate the various individuals with their hand up? I see two up already. Would that be okay?
So, for anyone who can make a public comment, please raise your hand. We have, through the Zoom feature. When you are called upon, please state your name, your address and your affiliation with the school, such as parent. When you are called upon, say, state your name, your address and your affiliation with the school such as parent, etc.
Yeah, thank you.
And change, please. Hold on one.
They're on mute, unfortunately.
Dave, can you help me with that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mike Face. I live at 71 Santana Street and I'm a parent. First, I'd like to say thank you to the school for recognizing Terry before you guys started. And third, secondly, I'd like to thank Erin for the hard work that she put forward for this new plan. It is a lot better than the first one. I do have a couple of questions. The concern I have is while the kids are in school, are you changing the remote learning timeframe? Because right now the kids work 8:30 to 1:30 and you're telling me that the kids that will be in school will be 9:00 to 2:30 and they're going to have access to teachers. So with that, that's my first question. And secondly, how, when is the actual, the date when they're going to start doing Wednesdays? Is that the second week that you're going to do this for? Because I really think that that's a good idea where you flip-flop the Wednesdays back and forth between the, the two sets of grades.
The Wednesdays, we'd have two weeks of just two days and then we would start adding the Wednesdays. So it would be on the third week that we would add the Wednesday. And to answer your question about, but the idea right now is that the remote schedule would stay the 8 to 1:30. So the kids that are remote are 8 to 1:30 and the kids that are in person are 9 to 2:30. We may need to look at that because I don't want to confuse families. There will be some families with kids at home on a given day and kids in school. So we haven't completely finalized that. But I'm trying to figure out how to help people transition without being overly confusing with schedules. And I know schedules for families at home, it can be a challenge. So that's kind of where we're at. We haven't completely decided, but as of now, the 9 to 2:30 would only be when you're in person.
Okay. And then my last question is for the school day, when they're in class, are they going to have a full schedule? Or are they going to stay with a remote learning class schedule?
Great question. They are going to stay with the same schedule that they have for remote learning. So they would have an A day and a B day. And the reason for that is we started, when we started our planning, we, the original thinking was they would do all of their classes in one day and have shorter classes. And the staff really said, you know, we'd really like to keep our 80-minute blocks because it gives us more time to be able to work with the students. And it also gives us more time to be able to give students mask breaks and, you know, a get outside when they can break. Whereas if we, if we combined and did six classes in one day, they would be short classes. And the staff felt that, that, that would make the kids feel that was too rushed. So we're sticks, it would stay with the A day, B day schedule, three blocks each day.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to invite Carrie Mar. It wouldn't let me do it, so I put it in this way. Is that okay? Carrie, if you can unmute yourself.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, great.
Hi, I've sent, my name is Carrie Mar. I'm a parent and a very frustrated parent. And I did send all the school board members a letter and I really do hope you guys all got it. Just to go over a few things in that letter, you know, the IT issues. My daughter has, still cannot log on to her classrooms. It's just sitting there spinning and spinning and spinning. She can't, now she can't even get into the classwork. Now I've tried three different houses, her grand, two of her grandmother's houses, still having the IT issue. IT department has told me it's a wideband issue on the school side. Her education is being damaged. She is falling behind and I'm getting like no support at all. I'm very frustrated. I've called the school, she calls the school and she gets put to voicemails where the teachers say, sorry, we can't see your face. We have to mark you absent. Now I believe that she's just being blocked out of her classes and I do not think this is correct for her. I don't know what can be done, but I'm very frustrated. I work full-time. She's never left home alone. She's always with her grandmother.
So Erin, do you, can I just ask, thanks for the comment. You, you, you have some students who probably have similar issues that, that are not in only because they have IEPs or whatever, but have these kind of situations that, so those kinds of arrangements could be, could be made. I don't, I don't, that was the first thought that came to mind and I just want to say before I let you sort of.
Right, sure. I mean, we, you know, we, we've spoken and from what that has come to me so far, sounds like an internet at home issue because the schools, the white, the internet at the school is only while on school property. And, and I can completely understand your frustrations as I would be just as frustrated with that happening. I know I've spoken with the team about it and they're aware that she continues to have those issues, you know. And you've had some different Chromebooks. You could certainly come in and I'm happy to sit down with you and look at her Google Classroom and see what's going on and see what she's seeing. And the, you know, the tech department certainly is trying to help families. There's lots of families that have had some technical issues off and on. And sometimes it's hard to troubleshoot what's happening at someone's home because they can't, you know, they can't emulate what you're seeing at home. But you could certainly.
She sent her teachers screenshots of what the computers are doing and IT tells me it's a wideband issue. I've been through three Chromebooks plus went out and purchased my own and a hotspot. So I know.
The question I was asking, Erin, is do you have students who have these tech issues? I know, I know districts right around here where I live have students that for one reason or another have a tech issue, whether it's the school, whether it's home or whatever, and they actually come into the building and are able to access their classes from there, I'll say each day or some number of days. I've, I've seen that model in a number of places. And I'm wondering if you're, maybe that's a conversation for the two of you to have. We're not going to have it here at a board meeting, obviously, but that might be a conversation to have.
Sure. Yeah. Carrie, if you want to give them a call tomorrow, we can talk through some other options.
Absolutely, because I mean, she's falling behind and this is very frustrating, not only for her. She's getting depressed. She's gone to neurological doctors now because she's getting migraines from being so stressed out. I mean, there, there's got to be something we can do for our kids. They are our future. And they're what's going to lead the path when it's time for us to all step away from our jobs, you know. So, so we got to give them a proper education and I just don't think that the remote learning is a very good option. I mean, that's certainly, I, I want them to be back in school and she wants to be back in school.
And so do we. And, and, and please know that, that teachers will be working hard with students who do, you know, may have missed things or need a little extra catch-up when they do return because remote learning's been hard for lots of kids. So we, we recognize that and we're prepared for that.
Okay, so.
Great, thank you.
Nicole Douglas? Please unmute.
I did. Hello. Hi, my name's Nicole Douglas. I live at 16 Maple Ridge Road. I do have a unique perspective of being a little teacher at Winnetka High School, but I come to you today as the mother of a sixth grader at Seabrook Middle School. First, I'd like to start by thanking parents who have done an amazing job supporting your students. It has not gone unnoticed. And I know that teachers everywhere know that you've taken on different challenging roles with your child's education and it hasn't been easy. I'm speaking today in support of the school board making the safest decision for our students by putting off in-person school until the community numbers are safe to do so. I completely understand the desire to go back to face-to-face school. I miss having my students face-to-face and remote instruction is not comparable to the high-quality education that we're used to from SAU 21. I won't argue that. But let's not be fooled into thinking that a hybrid or face-to-face, a hybrid slash face-to-face model is the best choice. It has its limitations, too. We just heard that our students are going to remain in the same classroom all day with the same group of students, have their lunch delivered to them and limited socialization. I believe something should be said in support of staying the course. What happens in a few weeks when and if there's a situation? The students get pulled out of school yet again. Yanking kids back and forth between two imperfect models is a huge learning distraction, let alone a logistics nightmare for teachers trying to plan lessons. Teacher struggles are not my primary concern, but let's remember that change is stressful for everyone. When students are forced to adjust to new changes, it impedes learning and creativity and creates anxiety. So the fewer the changes, the better. We hear all the time that other districts have their kids face-to-face. While this is true, let's remember that they are also being forced to close or quarantine entire classrooms at the same time increasing exposure risks to all that are involved. This is stressful for students and families. I believe that the decision to bring students back should be informed by data. That would indicate that when it is returned, when it is safe to return, there is little chance we will have to go back to remote again. Please wait until the time is right. Students are lowing, are learning and growing with remote instruction. It might not be as well as pre-pandemic learning environments, but please don't increase student anxiety by yanking the kids back and forth, forcing them to adjust to changing expectations. I know that times are hard and there are many decisions to be made. Our students are used to Seabrook Middle School being a safe place for them to be. And I urge you to wait to bring students back to Seabrook Middle until it is truly safe to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, I see no other hands raised at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, I'd like to close the public comment on the, on the two plans going back to school.
So Mike, we'd be looking, we'd be looking for action on the, the elementary plan has been implemented. We'd be looking for action to support the, the implementation of the, the middle level model that Erin has proposed.
You want those two separate motions?
Two separate motions. We don't need one on the elementary at all. That, that's already, that's already underway. It was, the elementary model was more an expansion of what we were already doing.
Okay, I'll take a motion unless there's further discussions on this to implement the in-person school plan as proposed by Erin and the middle school. Thank you, Kelly. I'd like a second, please.
Second.
Second for Jen. And with no further discussion, Deborah, would you please take a roll call vote?
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown? Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Michael Rabidu?
Yes, thank you.
I don't think we're all going to miss that mute button.
No.
I was frozen.
Okay, the next one is policies and Bill will read each one to us so we can understand them.
Yes, a, a dramatic reading, actually. It'll be, yes.
So the policy committee has met and has recommended another group of policies. There are two, I didn't do this last week and I should have. There are two in particular that I'd like to, to point out to you. First of all, this is considered a first reading, doesn't require any action. But either, either tonight or sometime after, as you look through them, if you see something that you have a question about, you just need to ask us and we'll be sure you get an answer. If these go through the first readings, and they normally do, then they would go to the joint board for approval in, in January. There are two policies here that I think are of particular interest. One is a policy on, it's Title IX, sexual harassment issues. There have been changes in the law at the federal level. This policy is designed to implement those changes, even though there's now talk about changing back from those changes. So we'll continue to monitor that, but it's, it's implementation in terms of investigations around, around sexual harassment and the, and those types of issues. The second is an equity policy, which this team and a number of our principals and a number of other coordinators and teachers throughout our districts worked on, just designed to make, make sure that our communities understand the commitment made by our boards and our administrators and our teaching staff to make certain that students get, all students get what they need. And that's a really, that's, that's one I would really recommend to you in terms of a read. I think it's a well-written policy. We did a lot of research in other districts throughout the country on that policy and, and making sure it was really something that sent the right message to our communities about what we think about equity and, and those types of issues. So tho, those are the, those are the policies that are here for first read again. If you have questions in the coming weeks, just, just let one of us know. A number of these are policies in the health and those areas and whatever. Dr. Kelly would be your person particularly to direct those questions to. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Robin.
Thank you. We don't need a motion or anything to move it forward, first read. Okay, great. As Dr. Lupini pointed out, if you have any questions after reading through all of these, I've read them all beyond the policy committee. They're extensive and it's something that we actually need, all the boards need, is a clarification on this. Okay, we do have a personnel issue, but I'll go through the meeting minute, next meeting minute dates first. SEU 21 Joint Board Meetings on Thursday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. All of these will be remote, by the way, correct? SEU 21 Operations Committee is Tuesday, January 5th at 5:30, again, remote. Seabrook School Board Regular Meeting will be Tuesday, January 12th, remote at this point in time. And SEU 21 Joint Board Policy Meeting will be Wednesday, January 13th at 4:30, again, remote. Okay, Dr. Hobbs has sent us a, another meeting, another Zoom meeting to go to for the non-public. I'll take a motion for going to non-public.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. That'll be going non-public under RSA 91-a colon 3, number 2A. Deb, would you please take a roll, roll vote, please?
Do you remind me who did the motion?
It was.
Jen?
Ben and Jessica.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Mike Rabidu?
Yes, I'll see you all on the other side. Thanks.
Just a note for the attendees here, Deb will keep this meeting open and we will be back after.
Great, thank you. Um, I will make the motion to come into, back into public session from non-public. Do I have a second? Thank you. Deb, would you please take a roll call vote?
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Michael Rabidu?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. The next motion is in recognition of years of service as a benefit, survivor benefit for Terry Bragg's family in the amount of $8,800.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So Mike Rabidu, motion is second?
I did, Jessica.
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Michael Rabidu?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you, Deb. I think that's the end of it. I'd like to thank Dr. Lupini for his years of. Dr. Lupini for his years of being our superintendent.
Thank you, Mike.
And, uh, the great job. We've been through all of this and the changes and the, and the moving forward as both Stephanie and Erin have alluded to. Uh, it's been a great adventure and, you know, Dr. Hobbs is here because of that. Yes.
Adventure.
I'll leave it as a great adventure and also Caroline. Um, you know, all these new people that, uh, have popped up because of this, this plan that was put in place. And, uh, we, those that have been through all of this, um, really do appreciate it. And I hope that new members will begin to see more of it as time passes. So. I thank you. Uh, Kelly, yes?
Um, I just, can I just say that, well, first I want to say hope everyone has a nice Christmas, but also that, um, I know I've been, I know I've been tough on the middle school. Um, and I do want to recognize that I wasn't aware that there's been as much staff as there has been inside the middle school. I know that there's been many teachers in the middle school as well as our professionals in the middle school. And I just want to give them a huge recognition and I apologize if. If I was a little frustrated for the ones that weren't in there if they felt like that they weren't being recognized. And I just want to say thank you and that you've done a great job. And then I know behind the scenes, sometimes you may feel like you weren't recognized. So that's all I want to say.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? Would. Jess, we can't hear you. You're, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. I froze. My screen froze, so I missed part of this, but I just want to wish, uh, Dr. Lupini the best of luck on his retirement and enjoy.
Thank you, Jessica.
Great. Any further comment?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna be, that's, that's what I'm gonna do. Yeah.
Hold up to Simon says, hit the mute button.
I can see the experience. Retirement is great.
Yeah, whatever. That's why I'm going to town hall.
Yeah, right, right. You gotta hang out someplace.
Yeah, you can.
Take a motion to adjourn at this point.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jess. Anybody want a second? Forrest? All right, thanks. All right, raise a hands. We're done. Thank you.
Happy holidays, guys.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Holidays. Thank you.
Everyone.
See you next year.
Enjoy. Stay safe.